Are we on air? Apparently, we are. Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Town Council meeting for Thursday, October 23rd. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Boyd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no announcements tonight. Do you have announcements? Where would that be? There is no Yellow Folder. File Yellow Folder. I have no announcements here. Do you have announcements there?
I do have announcements for myself. Merrimack Police Department wants to remind the community this year's trick-or-treat hours, which is Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Neighborhood streets will have a heavy presence from our police officers and police volunteers for the safety of children. Tomorrow, Friday, October 24th, the annual Halloween party at Wasserman Park in the Function Hall from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will then be showing a movie, Ghostbusters, from May 15th to 10:00 p.m. This is a free family event for the community. And stay tuned because there might be giveaways for the best costumes. Election Day is November 4th. Just a reminder, the polls are at the high school, and they'll be open from 7:00 to 7:00. And on a sad note, a police chief of ours, Police Chief Flanders, passed away. So our thoughts and prayers go out to the Flanders family.
Okay. Any comments from the press or public? Come right up.
Good evening. My name is Steve Tomaso, 146 Bebusco Lake Road. I know you have a lot of important stuff to take care of this evening, so I'll make this short and sweet. Back on September 11th, I was here making a request for the Town Council to either create or amend an noise ordinance in reference to roosters. It's been over a month, and I've heard nothing from the council. I'd like to have a status report, please.
Well, I'm going to turn the floor over to Acting Town Manager Paul McCout.
The directive was for Eileen to look into this once she gets back. I only be returning to work tomorrow, and that is one of the first things I have put on her little things of items to remind her of. So we did some background work, so it's when Eileen gets back, she'll be putting something together.
So I can expect when to hear something?
Soon. I don't want to commit to a date because she's not here, but I think it's evident that he has provided information to you that you are way on the top of the list.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a couple go here, and some are here and some are not, so I'm going to go according to the list. Recognition of the retirement of town employee. The Town Council will present, unfortunately, we will not be presenting, this will be presented at a later time, a recognition plaque for Fire Captain Shawn A. Allison in recognition of his retirement from the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department effective October 14th, 2014. He has been employed full-time by the Town of Merrimack Fire Department since April 3rd, 1989. Next to my congratulations and thanks to Captain Allison for his time, and I'm sure Fire, you know, Mr. Curry, Fire Captain Curry, Chief Curry, thank you, will be presenting the plaque to him at an appropriate time. However, we do have Fire Lieutenant Richard B. Barrows, and he's going to be receiving a plaque in recognition of his retirement from the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department effective October 14th, 2014. He has been employed full-time by the Town of Merrimack Fire Department since November 30th, 1987. And Chief Curry, you're going to be doing the honors.
Well, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Barrows for his time with the Fire Department. He is a great asset to the department, and also I'd like to thank Captain Shawn Allison for his commitment to the department. I've got a quick things here to say a little about Shawn, then we'll move into Lieutenant Barrows. But again, as it was said, Shawn Allison was hired in April of 1989. He is promoted to Master Firefighter '94. In 1998, he was given the honors of the VFW Firefighter of the Year for his commitment to the organization. Promoted to Lieutenant in 2001, promoted to Captain in 2005. Captain Allison was certified EMT Company Officer, many fire rescue classes under his belt, and he was also one of our hazmat technicians. Captain Allison, for many years, was responsible for all our rescue equipment that the department had, ensuring that it was in the ready order, buying what we need, and training all the personnel that we had in the department on the proper use of that. He was instrumental in ensuring that our heavy rescue was up to speed with the equipment that we had, and again, that was an excellent piece apparatus, and he's did a great job with that. Moving on to Lieutenant Barrows, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Pearson.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. And just a few things I'd like to say about Lieutenant Barrows. As it was said before, Lieutenant Barrows was hired by the Town November 1987. Rick was promoted to Lieutenant on October 12th of 2005. His certifications included EMT Company Officer, Rescue Systems 1 and 2, and hazmat technician. He was also a member of the FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Task Force out of Beverly, Massachusetts, where he operated as an hazmat technician. Rick received numerous spot performance appraisals throughout his career, commending him on his leadership on the fire ground, and I just want to go through and mention a few of them. In July of 1989, Firefighter Barrows was commended for his actions in a hazmat response where 75 gallons of kerosene were spilled in a residence. His actions and quick thinking reduced the damage to the contents of the residence and received a letter from them thanking us for his skill and expertise. In January 31st of 2000, Firefighter Barrows was commended for his actions at a second-alarm structure fire. He was the acting lieutenant of Engine 2, who was first stew at the fire. He and firefighter Dave Trepani encountered heavy fire conditions and a report of a subject possibly trapped in the building. They completed a primary search and extinguished the seat of the fire under extremely difficult conditions before the second companies could arrive. In February 24th of 2002, Merrimack Fire was dispatched to a building fire on Hartwood Drive. Lieutenant Barrows, while off duty at home, grabbed his spare set of turnout gear and went to investigate at the house next door. He found smoke coming from the windows of a bedroom on the second floor. He entered the building, searched to ensure that everybody was out, and then went upstairs again to close the door to the fire room to prevent the spread of fire. His quick actions saved the home from major damage, but when talked about, Rick said it was really no big deal. January 18th of 2006, following a storm front that moved through the town, Lieutenant Barrows and his Engine 2 crew noticed a tree limb on the roof of a house on Turkey Hill Road. Now, they were just driving by, and he told the company to turn around to inspect it. Upon inspection, he found that the limb had actually gone through the skylight. They also found after that it was a seasonal home and the residents had left for Florida prior to that. He did make an effort through the police department to find a caretaker, and the building was secured for the winter to prevent any major damage. Lieutenant Barrows always put the well-being of his crew first, and he retired on October 14th after almost 27 years of service to the Town of Merrimack. And on behalf of the department, Rick, I would like to thank you for your service, compassion, and friendship.
Thank you.
Okay, presented to Lieutenant Richard P. Barrows. Upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Fire Rescue Department in recognition for loyal and dedicated full-time service, which you have contributed for almost 27 years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been the tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance in duty, November 30th, 1987, to October 14th, 2014, presented by the Town Council and the Town Manager's 23rd day of October, 2014.
Congratulations. I will repeat what Finley Rothhouse just said. Good for you. And I'm going to be joining you real soon on retirement. 35 working days left. But who's counting? Congratulations, Chief. Thank you, guys. Okay, recognition. The Town Council will present a recognition plaque to Mr. Lawrence Gay. Again, he was not able to come here this evening as well, but the Public Works Department will be providing that plaque to him. And again, thank you, Lawrence Gay, for your time as well. This is recognition of his retirement from the Highway Division of the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department effective November 3rd, 2014. He has been employed full-time by the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department since January 21st, 1990. Congratulations to Mr. Gay. Okay, Town Committee Member resignation. Town Council to consider the acceptance of the resignation received from Merrimack Conservation Committee Member Thomas Lehman.
Moved to accept.
With regret. Seconded.
Motion by Tom Mayhan, seconded by Bill Boyd, with regret. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, zero, zero. Let me catch up here. Okay, appointments. Just, okay. Annual review. With the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee Chair Susan Lee, per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act on. Susan.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me back. It's been about a year. Actually, I think you saw me a little sooner than a year, but, okay, this year, we sort of continued on the role of investigating incentives that might help with business activities in town. And last November, I was here and made the presentation on RSA 162K, which is formerly known as the Municipal Economic Development Revitalization Districts, otherwise known as TIF, which is Tax Increment Financing. Our next charge was to investigate, study, and prepare a presentation on RSA 79F, which is taxation of farm structures and land under farm structures. And if we thought TIFs were difficult to understand, this one is even worse. So we've spent a lot of time going back, what do things mean, trying to get information, try to get confirmation how it's actually applied, and we're still working on it. We have made a presentation of the draft we have to date to the Agricultural Commission back in June to get their input on it, and now there are more questions that need to be delved into. So that one's still ongoing. We've continued to sort of bounce back and forth our ideas on having some form of a recognition award for the businesses in town, and that one is also ongoing as we have differences of opinion of how it should be done and how it should be awarded and things like that, but it's still out there. When I was here last time, we had been asked to start looking at new market tax credits by the Town Council and Eileen Cabanel. That is next up on our list once we put the RSA 79F, the farm structure, to bed. We've done some preliminary work on it to find out. That one also is going to be fairly complex, and we're probably going to have to go to someone in the state to help us figure out exactly what it means for businesses in Merrimack. We did have a guest speaker this year, Thomas F. Galagani, who is from the, he's actually the Economic Development Director in Nashua, and he came to talk to us about the Greater Nashua Loan Fund because it is a source of funding for businesses that maybe don't qualify for conventional loans. There is some assistance in helping them put together their plans, but it is a way for people to borrow some money. It's a self-funded loan. They were, the, this program was funded, and after the initial funding, all of the monies paid back from the loans granted have gone to making new loans. And it's just something that, as an educational thing for businesses in the area, we had him come in and talk to us about it so that, you know, try to get the word out there that this, it's administered through Nashua, so sometimes people feel it's restricted to Nashua, and it's not. It's for the Greater Nashua region. We took some time to review the information shared with a number of people in town by Mark T. Broth from Drummond Woodson on the Right to Know presentation as committee members. There are concerns about emails and how you communicate with one another, and so we spent an evening discussing some of the information we had gathered so that hopefully, we are in fact, conducting our committee business correctly. And that kind of brings us up to our plans for the future. I had an opportunity to talk to Tim Thompson last month to find out what we could do as a committee, if there was something he felt we could help with. And now that the master plan update has been accepted, there are in fact, a number of economic development action items that need to be implemented, and so he has given me his number-one priority for our assistance, which is to help him with developing a user-friendly guide for people who come into town to open new businesses or who want to expand their old ones. So when they start their plan, they know all the steps they have to follow, who they have to talk to, so it's not a big mystery. And they know if they have a question, it'll direct them where to go. So that is our next action that we are going to take with him along, hopefully, we can do it sort of in concert with the new market tax credits for the Town Council. And other than that, our concern is we have gone from in 2007, a committee of 11 members, we are now down to three. We had the, unfortunately, several of our members who have been very active found that their personal and their work commitments prevented them from attending many meetings, and so many of them had terms that were up this past spring, and they opted not to continue on. And so some of our other meeting time has been trying to come up with effective ways to recruit new members. I think we've had absolutely fantastic people working together. I think we've put out some really good product over the years, but like a lot of committees, I think we're not alone in having people not be able to make the time commitment, and we haven't quite figured out where to find our new members. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you. I really think the idea of the user-friendly user guide for businesses is right on the money. I think that's a great idea. And I wish I had a magic bullet for you, for volunteers.
Well, I think a lot of committees in town are in the same boat. It's like, how do you let people know that, you know, these are just, you know, fascinating people you're going to get to meet and work with? And it's wonderful when you have all the different but respectful opinions, and you can still work towards a goal. And some of our projects have involved things that one person looks at it from one way, and that's, they figure that's the way to look at it, but then someone else say, "Well, what about this?" And it really has spawned some really interesting discussion and taken, in some cases, taken things that we thought, "Oh, this is pretty simple." Oh, guess it's not quite as simple as we were hoping it was going to be. So that's where we are. So other than the two projects that I mentioned that we're going to be moving on to, is there anything else you'd like us to do?
Any questions or comments from anyone? Yes.
More of a comment. I just wanted to say thank you personally, Susan, for your efforts at the Fall Festival Business Expo. Everybody in your committee always does a lot, a big effort there, and I know your presence there was important, and it was a success because of your involvement, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. I think we've had a great volunteers helping out with that. It's a wonderful event, and I've made it through the first eight, so hopefully, I can make it through some more.
Anyone else? Yes, Finley.
Thank you, Susan. I was just wondering, just for anybody who might be interested in volunteering, when are your meetings held frequently?
We meet on the second Wednesday of every month at 7:00 o'clock in the Merrimack Memorial Room, which is over next to the Town Manager's office.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, and thank you very much, Susan.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, moving on, there is no public hearing. Are there any state reps or any of the legislators in the room? I see none. Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim Thompson and I met with representatives from AT&amp;T on Tuesday. They had questions for us. We offered nine parcels of land in town for possible placement of cell towers. They're in the process of reviewing that and making a determination, and when they make the determination, they'll be back in touch with Tim Thompson on that. Chief Doyle and myself met with Superintendent Chaffrey and other school members to discuss polling place location. We looked at all the J M U's complex in response to the joint meeting request. We're gathering further information, and we'll be presenting sometime in the months of November, December, to both the Town Council and the School Board on the findings of the polling place. In following up with the tree removal request discussed during the council meetings on the 25th, I walked a town-owned parcel located at Atherton Road with Mike Powers, Bay State There were several questions that approached, was asked. Mike is looking into possible forest selective cutting over there. One of the other questions was, why did the town retain the property? In the notes, it said potential recreation area. And the other thing is, is that the parcel that came asking for the trees to be removed had his property surveyed. 50 trees are marked, and they all are on town property. So when talking to Mike Powers, the forester, he's looking maybe at a selective cut to see potential of revenue stream for the Town of Merrimack if the council so chooses, and that will be brought back at a further, a future meeting for discussion. On Monday night, I had the opportunity to sit with the Conservation Commission and go over the Beaver Management Study that was just completed. The Conservation Commission has six areas of high importance they will attempt to manage this fall, with additional areas being managed in the spring.
Could you repeat that study again? What's the title?
The Beaver Management Study.
Beaver Management. Thank you.
There was one area, the area of Mayflower and Powder House Road in Merrimack. The ponding and the pond issue was listed as the number-one priority, and we're working with a contract to get in there to install water level indicator and beaver deceivers. Hopefully, that will be done in the next couple of months. And one of the things I did mention earlier in the announcements was Chief Flanders. What I forgot to mention about Chief Flanders is he was the first appointed police chief in the Town of Merrimack. So once again, my condolences go out to the Flanders family.
Thank you very much, Paul. There's no consent agenda. No old business. New business, committee appointment. The Town Council to consider appointing the recommended individual. That would be Cynthia Glenn for the Merrimack Conservation Commission. This is for a full position. She originally had applied for the alternate, but we found out that there was a full position where, with an expiration date of 2017, and she was interested in that, so we have changed her application to reflect that. Okay?
Move approval. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Mayhan. I had the privilege of interviewing her. She certainly has, she has been, and Tom and I did, and obviously Chair Tim Tenhae, she expressed a long-time interest in conservation, and she has been attending meetings, has been watching them, but has been attending them too. So she knows what she's getting into, and she really reflects some passionate interest in it, so I would concur with that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Seven, zero, zero. Okay, donation gift to the Merrimack Police Department Community Service Division by Captain Mike Dudashe. Look at you, already there.
Good evening.
And I'll let you do the honors. Go right ahead.
How are you? Back in September, Fidelity came to us with 10 bicycles. I call them tricycles in my memo, but they're basically just a little bigger than bicycles. The next level up for bicycles are five Huffy boy bikes and five girl Huffy bikes, and it's kind of a project that Fidelity's been going on, giving some donations from the Community Relations Division, and they thought they would give them to the police department. The value on them are approximately $900 to $1,000. They're brand-new. They asked if we could present them to something that's deal with the kids in town, and we came up with the idea of the Halloween Fun Night, which is tomorrow night, and between Parks and Rec and Rob Kellher from the police department, and they run a costume contest, so we're looking at giving those as gifts. So we're looking for the council to accept the donation.
I was wondering how you make a determination, and who gets the bikes, and you answered our rating. Okay, any questions?
Move approval.
Second. It's okay. Take him.
Was it Dan?
Yeah.
Motion made by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Dwyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstention? Seven, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for clearing up what I thought were bicycles and bicycles.
I put on tricycles, and he said, "I think they're a little bigger than tricycles."
And I gather we're going to send a letter to Fidelity for their...
And then that's already been done.
Beautiful, beautiful. And thanks to Fidelity for being a good corporate partner in our community.
Okay, permission to pursue assistance to firefighters grant, AFG, submitted by Assistant Chief Brian Buonaman. And Captain Gagnon. I'll let you do the honors.
You all have this, but I'll read it. It's kind of, it's relatively short for everybody else that doesn't have this in front of them. Introduction. "We are requesting permission to apply, accept, and expend the assistance to firefighters grant, or AFG, for the purposes of replacing outdated self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCBAs, which are beginning to fail and incurring increasing maintenance costs. The grant is to replace our current complement of self-contained breathing apparatus that are at the end of their projected life cycle, which is normally 15 years. The new..." The new SCBAs will be fully compliant with NFPA 1981, the 2013 edition. Total cost of the grant could range between three hundred forty-seven thousand to four hundred thousand dollars, depending on the pricing at the final time of purchase. Based on the demographics of the town of Merrimack, acceptance of the grant will require a 10% price match. Therefore, the town's portion could be up to forty thousand dollars. The AFG grant will include all SCBAs, masks, spare bottles, and other associated equipment to complete the project. If we are successful in the grant, we would expect to begin taking delivery in late spring 2015. Merrimack Fire Department is an all-hazard department that responds to all types of emergency calls, including structural and vehicle fires, hazardous materials, carbon monoxide incidents, confined space rescues, to name a few. All of these incidents require an SCBA to operate safely. SCBAs are the single most important piece of safety equipment we provide our personnel that allow them to operate in dangerous environments. In simple terms, without SCBAs, along with the closing, the clothing that makes up our firefighter's protective envelope, our personnel could not effectively do their jobs. The current SCBAs we have are three generations old and are built to 1997 standards. When purchased, they were very good pieces of equipment and have served us well. Our SCBAs, however, were designed prior to 9/11/2001. Since the terrorist attacks on nine, 9/11, new SCBAs are required to be chemically, biological, and radiological compliant. This is a critical component of the new technology incorporated into new SCBAs. Regardless of the outcome of the grant, we need to replace our SCBAs. And this next CIP moving forward, we've included the cost of three hundred forty-seven thousands over a three-year consecutive period in the capital budget. Merrimack Fire Rescue always trying to move in a progressive direction as well as trying to provide better service to our community as well as provide a safe work environment. By replacing end-of-life cycle equipment, we'll be able to continue provide a high level of service to our customers. Basically, the assistance to firefighter grant comes out normally once a year and it's, they started after 9/11 and they've come out in various forms. Over the years, they've been more directed. Kind of feel that this is our, being three generations old, there's been three updates to that 1981 standard since we bought ours. 2002, 2007, and 2013. All of those have incorporated, um, updates that we found in the fire service over time that, that increase the capabilities or the safety provided to our firefighters and the environments they operate in. We're at the end of our life cycle. They're all fourteen, fifteen years old, thirteen years old. All our SCBA bottles are gonna, they're, we have, most of them have one hydro cycle left at fifteen years. They can't be hydroed. They're done. So, it's, it's, it's the time to do this. And like I said, it, it, this is the most critical piece of equipment. We provide our firefighters to do our jobs. We can have great trucks, but if we don't have these things at a very, all different types of incidents, we can't do our jobs. This, this, these allow us to do that. So, I'm gonna stop talking if you have any questions.
All right. Yes, Finley Rothaus.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I was, um, how, what, how many of our entire complement are, are we replacing?
Forty-four.
We're replacing all of them then. Do we have anything, have we anticipated in budgeting any, uh, any monies in our current budget, or do we have any funds set aside, which I don't think we do, not that I can recall? And nothing has been budgeted for?
No, and we've been talking about it for a while, but with the economic times we had, we've kind of kept pushing it back. We can get, we can push it out, push it out.
Were there any maintenance costs in?
There are maintenance costs and they've actually started going.
No, I mean, within our, within our budget.
Oh, yeah, we have maintenance money set aside for...
Do you recall what that was?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
That's okay. Um, and then I guess the last question is, is, um, is it so, in theory, every fifteen years or so, we're gonna have to replace an entire complement? So, I guess my question, and I don't even need an answer, but it's something I'd like somebody to think about, is there any way to break it up somehow? And I don't know how you do that.
We started looking at this about eight years ago, or seven, eight years ago, when I was promoted to captain and I took over SCBAs. At one time, we were talking about trying to, to phase replacement, like the military. It actually would have, it, this is the better way to go because of training and maintenance issues, and these things have changed quite a bit. So, if you start mixing, I don't want to get down in the minutia, but you start mixing standards and you can go, like face pieces can go back one standard, but not two, they can go, so that it starts to be a compliance issue and, um, and a maintenance issue and a training issue, which is the most critical.
Yeah, having three different things or something. I guess then, I don't know, if maybe five years out, we should start contemplating, you know, that replacement.
CIP.
I'm sure I'm not gonna be here in fifteen years, but, uh, that type of thing to, you know, because if we had to come up with all this money, almost half million dollars is substantial and, uh...
Right. I, I know, just so you, um, we feel like we're in a very good position because the federal government says obsolete air packs are fifteen years old. We're in the wheelhouse. Another portion of that is two standards out with three.
Right.
So, everything is point, I can't guarantee we're gonna get it 'cause it's, it's a, it's a grant. I have been working with Paul on this for probably a year, getting, trying to set everything up and just the actual application period opens up November 1st and closes November 30th, and then it goes through all the other things. We feel like we're in pretty good position. I, I'm not gonna guarantee anything, but this is priority one for us for the month. We've been looking at it for a year. We're here to get permission to pursue it and...
Right.
Well, I, uh, if we don't get this, we're gonna have to have a serious discussion on how we're gonna tackle this.
It's in the CIP.
It is.
Um, we did, we, we are looking at that and, hey, even though Assistant Chief Bornhamon is all for the full price, so every place on all forty-four, I think in the CIP, we kind of phased it over three-year period.
We, we spread it out over three years because of the cost. This is, would be ideal 'cause we can get them, train them, take the old ones out.
It's in the CIP that you'll be seeing in November.
I see.
Because we have to do both ways. If we get the grant, great. If we don't get the grant, we still need, uh...
But there's some matching funds that we have to...
The forty thousand dollars will not be a problem because three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars over the next three years, you know, it's significantly less.
Counselor Mahon?
Yeah, so, this grant will allow you to buy them in one shot? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Are there any other pieces of equipment? Well, how, let me back up. It sounds like about every four or five years, they're redoing the standard on that, on these?
It's supposed to be every three years. The last one took six years. The standards, though, when, our, our packs are compliant 'cause it met the standard that the data manufacturer.
Right.
So, it's not like a compliance issue. They're still compliant, just all the things that have been incorporated in firefighter safety are addressed in the newest standard.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, it's been, how many years since? It's been thirteen years since 9/11, since they've put, uh, uh, found it necessary to include chemical, biological, and radiological stuff. Okay? I mean, I was in the Army in 1969 and they were all over us on that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay? Because of the, because of the hazards. In fact, I lost points at a briefing during training because I forgot to mention the possibility of a radiational hazard. Okay? So, I mean, it's, I, my question is, what other equipment that you have that comes up for this kind of a review on a regular basis, on this periodic basis? Are there other items that you have?
Specifically for radiological?
No, 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 no.
Anything.
In general.
Just for standard reviews?
Yeah.
Well, almost any piece of equipment that we buy is going to be, no, no manufacturer produces anything that's not NFPA compliant to the current standard at the time. So, most of the equipment we have, almost ninety-nine percent of it, is compliant at the time we buy it based on the latest standard.
Okay.
Does that answer you?
Yeah. What I'm clumsily trying to get at is that if there are items like this and there are enough of them, it would seem to make sense to try and deal with this with another capital reserve fund like we do for the trucks and for the ambulances.
Very quick.
And for the other, and for maybe some other pieces. Pardon?
We have anything to do with this that big, other than the SCBAs and the ambulance.
Okay.
We may have personal protective equipment. We would have personal protective clothing that changes standards, but those wear out every three to four years. We're replacing them anyway, then those are in the actually operating budget. I have eight sets for career and three sets for call. So, as we start wearing those out, every year, replace eight sets. So, that works its way through and it keeps us within the standard.
All right.
The SCBAs are huge because it's such a large cost at, at a fifteen-year increment. And then we've been working on that for the last few years and we feel that this is the opportune time to go for the grant and have the highest chance of getting the grant to save those funds for the community.
Okay, I was just trying to think out loud and see if there was some other way to parlay other things and something that would make it sensible for us to do something on that basis rather than having the possibility of, uh, as your summary says here, that you're trying to move in a progressive direction and provide service to the community and provide safe, safe work environment. I know you're doing that, okay? That's not, that's not, not the issue, but in order to stay on top of that, because there are. So, so many changes coming down the pike, especially on this kind of stuff, that, uh, you know, it, it puts us through a, a bind every once in a while, like now, uh, to deal with it. But anyway, later on in the, in the agenda, we have budget direction?
Yeah, that would be one of them. Yeah, if there's any larger expenditures that you could foresee, yeah.
Like, when I, I said earlier, when I took over SCBAs, I started working with the chief as, as a captain then, how were we going? 'Cause we knew this pill was coming. And we started, well, let's, let's buy them, brand-new ones when the trucks come in. Have them come in with the trucks. And then as we started looking at, my eyebrows hurt with if we go to two or three standards and, and mixing equipment and then with the financial times we were in, we kind of, well, let's see how long we can go. To kind of answer your question, it wasn't that we weren't thinking about this stuff.
I understand that. And the other, the other piece of that, okay, from my perspective, is that I want to hear from departments about potential things coming down the road so that all of a sudden you don't walk in here and say, "Hey, I need four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty thousand dollars to do something." Okay? And we've been talking about this for eight years. Okay? It would be helpful when, when you come in for your budget review, those kinds of things, you know, we may not do anything with it. Okay? But from my perspective, I'd like to know what's going on so I have some, you know, idea of, of what's happening and what's likely to happen and then weigh that against what our exposures might be, on the exposures for the employees. And we can't do that if you don't tell us.
Like, if we get the grant, it might be a wise decision to start and put some money away when we have to replace them in ten years. Right? Just have a, as you mentioned, another line item.
Yep.
Counselor Dwyer?
Just for the record, I'm sure if you had a mixture of old ones and new ones, the white shirts would get the new ones and the old, and the younger guys get the old ones. Is that kind of what, what might have happened?
No.
No, all right.
Maybe in your department, but...
I was curious, how were they bought the first time around? Do you remember fifteen years ago, how, how they were purchased then? And they were probably half the price or probably even less than half the price, but I'm just curious how it was budgeted then.
It was a couple of years. It was over a couple of years.
And did they do a CIP thing?
I, I couldn't...
And remember? Just, I'm curious if how it was done then, but...
We'll have to have them look in the archives.
Yeah, it, it, they came over like two or three years, but we got bulk of it in the, in the same type, but that's why they're all in the same.
But you must, um, fifteen years ago, you probably didn't have forty-four units, right? The, the force grew a little bit, so maybe even, even probably buying a little bit more after, several years after.
Yep.
I think when they first started by, buying the SCBAs, I do believe that there was a initial grant, funding grant, and then there was money in the capital reserve fund for apparatus and they were bought through that, from what I recall, looking at some of the history. It's kind of vague, but that's, that's, that's kind of how it looks like it came up through 'cause you were buying SCBAs when you bought the trucks. And then extra ones were purchased to go on other trucks.
Yeah.
So, it was kind of a mishmash run-through. And then they were replaced because we've gone through many revisions now. And again, a, as you did mention, there wasn't, we didn't have that many at that time.
Right. And I think, um, our comment to Tom, I'm thinking the same way you were a little bit about, um, the number of units, but I'm thinking it is the most important unit you have. And then after that, their equipment is their clothes, you know, right? And you, your helmet, from your jacket and pants, boots, but after that, it doesn't, it's not complicated. Probably the biggest piece, obviously, is the truck. Then you're, but personally, this apparatus is everything. I mean...
It, the most vulnerable part on a human being is their lungs, and this is what protects us from that.
Yep. That's it. Thanks.
You know, having, having the thought of, uh, I don't know how the capital reserve fund reads for vehicles, uh, but, uh...
Equipment?
Yeah, apparatus or whatever, but I mean, not now, Paul, not now. Take it easy.
No, that's fine.
That's okay. It's again, thinking out loud again, you know, that might be a place to add a few thousand dollars a year to that fund, uh, to take care of those sorts of things.
Or does this, does this fall under the umbrella of the word "equipment"? I would think it, I would think it would. I mean, there's a pretty broad definition when you're...
I think that's how we, when we're going back and looking at this, we are looking at this as, as equipment and as a part of the apparatus, you know, of it, and, and looking at how the capital reserve was established. And it was for firefighter apparatus, engines, equipment, things that go along with, with the, with the major purchases that go along with, with the, uh, the job of being a firefighter. That's how we were looking at it when we were funding it.
'Cause a potential fifteen-year life cycle would fall into that, even though the dol, the individual dollar amount might not, but certainly the life cycle and, and piggybacking that on to other apparatus expenditures or, or needs.
And that's the same process we're following for the ambulance as we buy ambulances. The equipment that we need come into that pricing scheme. We, the ambulance that we're buying now and the one next year, the cardiac monitors are included in that, and then they're thirty-five thousand apiece, so they're included in that capital purchase. So, when they come in, we'll have the complement of equipment that we need. But those, we're only buying three, not forty. So...
Any other comments from the side? Counselor Rothaus.
I'm just curious, how much are they apiece and for the associated components that might have to go with it? Because I, at three forty-seven, I'm doing the math and it's a lot of money per unit.
Well, there's, there's masks, but the federal government says that a pack is the apparatus, two bottles, and a mask. Then we also have, we issue masks for sanitary reasons to every employee. So, you have extra masks. You also have a few extra bottles, some, we have some stuff where firefighters bail out equipment to come out of the, uh, if we have to come out of a second-floor window that goes on that, that's what we include as part of the SCBA. The, uh, uh, I lost my train of thought. The, uh, how we fill the bottles, our cascade system's good at the station.
Yeah.
We want to put in this to, to bring our, our portable cascade system up so we can top off our bottles.
Right.
So, there's, there, the federal government says that an air pack is seventy-six hundred dollars. And that's when you start, seventy-six hundred dollars.
Well, I did the math and it seemed to be about that. That's, it's a load more than I anticipated, but I was just starting...
They've gone up exponentially.
And whatever they are, they are, and we'll hopefully only have to pay 10%, so...
Right. And that, that's based on our population and what we're considered to be for, uh, community, based on anything more than twenty, twenty thousand people, I believe it's 10%.
Thank you.
Any other? The, your explanation about not wanting to have various things makes perfect sense to me. I mean, I kind of imagine, depending upon what truck you're in, does it have a certain makeup? And, oh, which one am I in? Oh, I have to, and how are you gonna remember? 'Cause I'm sure they differ. So, having a consistent piece of equipment, you don't have to concern yourself with that.
We, exactly. We train to muscle memory.
In the middle of an emergency, you don't have to want to worry about which one I have.
We don't think about this stuff. It's just...
That's what makes Southwest, one of the reasons they run a tight ship, because they have one airplane that they fly for the same reason, the training's the same, the pilot training's the same, maintenance's the same.
Right.
So, I'm with you.
That makes, made sense to me when you were talking about. Okay, any other questions? Okay, could I please have a, a motion?
Move to, uh, are we allowed to allow them to expend ahead of receipt?
No, basically, this goes back to a couple of years ago when the council won on these large grants, they wanted-
Pre-appropriate.
To get, before all the work was done, the council wanted to hear about the grant and whether or not they wanted to, the town to apply for the grant. So basically, this is just to apply and have the town manager sign any unnecessary paperwork needed.
Right, it's just for the application.
Seconded.
What he said. Okay, motion by Councilor Mayhout, seconded by Councilor Boyd. Any other questions? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? None? Nope. Any negatives? Nothing. Seven, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm just gonna wait till the very end. Okay, well, he's getting ready. Yes. The next item on the agenda is direction for the 2015-16 budget, submitted by Acting Town Manager Finance Director Paul T. McCully, to ask the town council to contemplate budget parameters for the 2015-16 budget season, which will be discussed at a future meeting.
Uh, just give me a second, make sure-
You're gonna turn the TV.
Yeah, it's about serious game tonight.
You can check, bring that down, Paul.
I come before you tonight to ask the council's guidance on the 2015-16 budget. Currently, we're in the process of, the departments are in the process of putting together their budget with the timetable of, as we have done in the past. Usually, we come to the council late October, early November to get their guidance. We'll be back in front of the council, the town manager, and myself in first meeting in December to present the town manager's budget, and then we'll begin the budget hearings in, in January. But what I wanna do is, I just wanna give you a quick overview of where we are now. We're currently in the 2014-15 budget. Our current budget is thirty-one million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Of that, roughly five point nine million dollars is in capital needs, whether it's capital deposits, other capital, road infrastructure, or capital funds that are being expended, which equates to about eighteen percent of our budget is in capital. And that was one of the goals of, of this town council, is to increase capital and, and infrastructure and capital. And, and like we did, we just heard about the SCBA's. That's all part of this. When, when we do these things, that's all part of the capital plan. Quick summary is our, like I said, our total appropriations is thirty-one million, nine seventy-nine, two fifty-seven. Subtotal revenue is about sixteen million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Basically, it comes to about sixteen million dollars that we need to raise by taxes. As, I'm saying it's an estimated tax rate right now of five dollars and forty-six cents. I do not have my tax rate setting appointment yet with DRA. I am working diligently to get that by either tomorrow or beginning of next week. Tax bills will be followed shortly after that by a week or so. But I'm estimating that the town's tax rate, the town's portion, meaning the municipality's portion, is five dollars and forty-six cents. When we came in front, after we passed the budget, we were estimating about five dollars and forty-nine cents. The big, the big reason for the difference is that we received additional value in the properties throughout town. So, what we know, we know right now that we're gonna have a decrease in health insurance costs. The reason why I can say that is because we're changing health insurance plans. I'm sorry, I gotta take these off here, I'll blurry. Uh, we're changing health insurance plans. Uh, we're going, uh, four of the five, five of the six unions are in the third year of the contract. And in that third year of the contract, they start paying ten percent of the plan. We change our health insurance to a twenty-dollar office visit, ten, twenty, forty-five for our pharmacy co-pays. So I know that we're gonna save money, because that plan should be cheaper than what we have now. However, the retirement system increased contributions and the town's portion of the rates. So we know we're gonna have an increased cost. Property liability, we have a not-to-exceed of nine percent. Workers' compensation, we have a not-to-exceed of nine percent. And like I said before, five of our six unions are in the third year of their contract. We also know electric rates are increasing between ten and fifteen percent. And natural gas rates are increasing. It's roughly about thirty-six percent. Two years ago, I signed a contract that was, was, was very, very good for the town. Re-signed another contract at, about three weeks ago. It's up twenty cents per therm, but it's still very good for the town. It's, it's still point eight-three cents per therm, which is, which is very, a very good rate for the town. And mostly, that's due to the consumption that we have at our wastewater composting facility. They really drive the, the therm rates. And, and they kill a lot for electricity, so with them being in the mix, we are, we get pretty significant rates, because we are a heavy user of both natural gas and electricity because of that process. Pending items, I was supposed to get the gross maximum rate from the health insurance company. It was supposed to be here to me yesterday. I was supposed to get an email. I got an email saying that the board of directors at the Health Trust had a long meeting and that the rates will be coming out early next week. Figuring about a five to seven percent increase in health insurance rate over what the, the cost for premiums were this year, they're, they're looking between a five and seven percent increase. We still have the highway garage bond out there for three point two million dollars, if so be, and, or, we're gonna discuss a little bit later, maybe an establishment of a capital reserve fund, up to five hundred thousand dollars. And the reason why I bring that other item in there of establishing a capital reserve fund is, as the council has asked, we went out and asked for volunteers in the community to join this committee. As of today, we have one person who has signed up for it. So it's up, you know, council discussion, how you want us to proceed with that, whether it's a bond or establishing a capital reserve fund for that. State revenues, rooms and meals, highway block grant, uh, those are all gonna be a very interesting topics as we come forward. As you know, in Ja, in November, next month, we're voting for a new governor. In January, the governor has to put together a budget for February, and it goes to the legislative body. So when we start our budget in July of 2015, the state will also have a new budget. And those are always items that seem to be on the, on the table with the state government is rooms and meals and highway block grant. And then, of course, we have one union contract, our ASME members to two-nine-eight-six, which are highway laborers that we're currently at the negotiating table with. We continue our commitment for paving and funding our capital reserve accounts. So what we know, the estimated tax rate is five dollars and forty-six cents, like I said. Health insurance, I'm expecting a decrease of about sixty-one thousand dollars net. Retirement costs, a ninety-six thousand dollar increase. Workers' comp, even though I have not to exceed nine percent, it's still gonna be a decrease because our rates are going down, because we, we have not had a significant number of workers' comps claims. Property liability, nine percent increase seems to be the norm the last couple of years. Natural gas, it's small, eighty-seven hundred dollars, even with that big increase I was talking about because of how, how good we're doing with getting a good rate. It's only an eighty-seven hundred dollar on, on the budget. And electricity, about eleven thousand dollars. And this is just for the general fund. Paving, in discussions with town manager Cabanelle, we restored the paving for the thirteen, fourteen-year, back up to a million dollars. She'd like to see if we can continue on that million-dollar paving. Cost of asphalt has gone up. We're not getting the mileage that we were getting before with the six to eight hundred thousand dollars we're putting in. I believe we, we're paving between two, two and four miles of road, depending on the proximity of where, where, where the roads that we're paving at the time. And our revenue is decreasing once again. Our interest is not there. Interest rates for, for what we're getting on our money are, are not there, and that's, you know, they're hovering at zero. And I know it sounded like a broken record with this, is that they've been hovering at zero for at least three to four years now, and there's no end in sight. Even talking to the bankers, they're, they're not seeing an end in sight right now with, with the interest rates coming back a little bit. And then, of course, we do have that union contract that would, would play if it gets to the voters for ratification. And then we have a new incentive, so with those, that, that will be about eleven cent increase on the tax rate if all this stuff came to fruition. And then we have this new incentive with the potential new capital reserve fund for highway garage. In talking with town manager Cabanelle, if you take the three point two million dollars, and we were saying, okay, let's divide that over, uh, uh, say, a six or a ten-year period. If you do it over a six-year period, it's five hundred thousand dollars. In the sixth year, if we put five hundred thousand dollars into this capital reserve, we'd have about three million dollars with interest, say about three, I'm not, say three point one-ish million dollars with interest over a six-year period. The cost of the garage, if it's three point two million dollars today, in six years, could be potentially four point two million dollars or more. So we'd still be behind the eight ball a little bit. The bond, though, would be significantly less. But we wanted to put that as a potential incentive for the council to see, and it just, it might be, uh, if it's not for the highway garage, maybe a potential new capital reserve for a building, remodeling, infrastructure kind of capital reserve. Our buildings are getting older, as you know. We had to replace forty thousand dollars worth of doors this past year and, and things of that sort, so it might be something nice to start hedging some of our bigger, bigger repairs in our building, in our buildings. So with that, the potential of a new capital reserve fund for the highway garage is seventeen cents. The five hundred thousand dollars equates to seventeen cents. Roughly between twenty-nine thousand and thirty thousand dollars, for every twenty-nine thousand to thirty thousand dollars, it's one cent on the tax rate.
One more time?
Between twenty-nine thousand to thirty thousand dollars, it's one cent on the tax rate. So if you add thirty thousand dollars, the tax rate will go up a penny. If you decrease it, thirty thousand dollars, it'll go down a penny. Like I said, we continue with our capital reserve funds. This is what we have put in for capital reserve funds in 2014-15. It's about one point, one million dollars, almost one point one million dollars. The, the big ones are, are the mill foil. We, we began funding the mill foil again at twenty-five thousand dollars. A new capital reserve fund, the geographic information system, GIS, was funded at ten thousand dollars last year through the ratification of the public. And what will happen with that is now we'll start building on that. And as, as for some people, just a reminder, that's for the, over, our aerial photographs in our GIS system are from 2005. They're almost ten years old. We definitely will need to start looking at upgrades to the GIS system, at least in the, the photos and things of that sort, and that's what this capital reserve fund was put into place for. And we, the library was seventeen thousand dollars for that library roof repair. And that looks like, uh, that, uh, that's a good number going forward. It might even need to increase a little bit for the prices that we got for a new roof over there, divided by the number of years. So, things that, so, so we put a million dollars into our capital reserve fund deposits that's, uh, significantly higher than 2011, ten-eleven, when we only put three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in. So we're moving in the right direction there. Other capital, not items, were general government was a new copier, police were the new cruisers, highway was a new, uh, gas station, uh, gas station, so to speak, gas pumps down at the, the highway garage, and nine thousand dollars worth of repairs in, in building and grounds for another, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Road infrastructure, which is road paving, was eight hundred for a total capital outlay of two point one million dollars in this current year budget, fourteen, fifteen, that we're in. And we're looking at, to keep it about the two million, two-one, two-two, two point one, two point two million dollars for next year's budget. If we can get the extra two hundred thousand dollars for road paving, then we'll be up to two-three, two-four. Here's our snapshot of our capital reserve funds. The, uh, we're, we're, we're still paying, we're still playing catch-up for the 2010-11 year where we only put three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in. I believe, you know, our balance at the end of 2010-11 was roughly about five, five point two million dollars. If everything comes to fruition, the capital reserve fund balance as of June 30, 2015 will be about two point four million dollars, which means that, you know, we, we've spent down half, half the balance in our capital reserve funds. Questions and discussion on what, uh, what you would like to see, or how would you like the town manager and myself to proceed with the budget?
Yeah, I'm looking for the same things I'm always looking for, more efficiencies, things that we've been doing for a long time, take a look at those and determine whether we still need to do them. And if we still need to do them, is it better to do them by farming it out or by doing something else internally? You know, those productivity issues have always been something that, you know, I've always brought up through the whole thing, I think, in terms of the other larger pieces of this, the other larger parts of it. I think, you know, this council's been consistent for the last six years about, you know, what our focus is and the things that we're looking at. It's hard to sit here and say what we really wanna do until, you know, like tonight, they walk in and they say, well, we've been talking about this for eight years. So, you know, how many more departments are gonna come in and say, this is something we've had under study for a while and, you know, and we have to make a judgment as to whether or not we're gonna go forward with it. And so there's always the, the, that balancing act that we have to do every year to deal with it and to come in with a, and to try and get, and to try and, and hit a number. But I think, again, those, those productivity things are things that I've always been harping on, and, and the departments have been very good about stepping up and dealing with those, but there's still a lot of things that could be looked at again and dealt with. And, uh, you know, making those calculations as to what it actually costs us to do something. And is there a, a private entity or a private process that would, that would take care of that thing for a lower cost? You know? So, I mean, those are generally my, my, you know, my pet peeves or, or wants or whatever things that I look for.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or suggestions? Councilor Dwyer?
Obviously, there, there are a lot of things on that list we can't control and never have, the, the natural gas, the energy costs, insurance, we all know it's just gonna come. And I can just speak for myself, I don't, I don't anticipate asking for the heads of three police officers or three firemen or, or the DPW. I mean, I don't, I don't, just don't see that happening. So my only thing I can whack and feel good about is two hundred grand more for paving. I like paving. I've been, I've, the four years I've been sitting here, I've, I've never really cut that, but million dollars is maybe just a little too rich. I know it's a goal, and Eileen loves, loves that number of saying a million dollars for paving. Uh, I don't like it. I'd rather, I'd rather go for the B-plus grade of maybe seven hundred grand, seven fifty, uh, eight hundred is about, about as heavy as I would be willing to go myself. I just think a million bucks is just too much. And I just think six, seven, eight hundred grand goes a long way. I mean, if we're spending that every year, our roads are getting repaired. I mean, the Turkey Hill this year was, I mean, it's beautiful. Uh, I think the philosophy of the highway department of concentrating on our main roads, our main pri, our, our main arteries is the way to go, and I think they've been doing that. And I'll always support a six hundred thousand plus number for the, for, for pavement. But I just think a million's too much to ask. And, and as we have these increases, all the taxpayers and the homeowners, they're having them too. Their, their electric bill, their food bill, their gas bill, you know, all that stuff. So everyone's feeling it on, on another level. So that's about the only one I would really, I think it's a, it's a nice outline. I think you guys, once again, came, came home with the nitty-gritty of it, so. I think you guys, once again, came, came home with the nitty gritty of it, so nice job. That's my two cents.
Counselor Rothaus?
And, and I generally might disagree with that. I don't know if eight hundred thousand is an appropriate number, I think it's a discussion that we're going to be hearing from, from Public Works. I do know that they use their survey, I don't remember what it's called at this point. Yeah, where they break it down. What is it called?
Paving Index.
Index, and it, it appears to work well in my eyes, because I think we have been getting some stuff accomplished. It's an easy target when it comes to budgeting, in my opinion, to go after these type of things, because it's going to be harmless to us, but in ten to fifteen years, it's going to be a nightmare for somebody to have to grapple with. And I always think of Bedford bonding twenty to thirty million dollars to fix their roads, which I think is kind of crazy, but that's, it's worked for them, I guess, but I, I've enjoyed the way that we've tried to.
The reason they're at thirty is because they've been delaying it for so long.
Right.
You know, they've been putting that off for ten years.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know where I might look for that golden egg to take out and deal with it, but, but I'm interested in, as the time approaches, to hear from Public Works on, on their desires and what they really think can happen.
Yes, Counselor Kinnick?
Well, finally, I agree with you. I, I don't know that we can arbitrarily cut it to any particular number, with the cost of materials going up, it's, it gets more and more difficult to get the linear footage we need for six hundred thousand or something. So I, I'd be hesitant to drop it back below the eight hundred that we've managed to get it back to at this point, but I can see where we won't push it to a million this year, we'll continue to look for it as our goal, but, but, you know, it, but I understand it's an easy one to whack and we have to be careful. You, you went through and told us about the appropriations this year and you just kind of blanket said, we expect the same number of capital appropriations next year. But there's computers and there's copiers and there's all kinds of things. Are you foreseeing that there's a, a rotation through town government, that we need a new copier every year or things of that nature or?
There is a rotation, it might not be copiers, but we're operating on an XP system throughout town in our computers and we're going to have, we're looking at that and actually we're, we're discussing that with IT about rolling out, you know, updated Windows Seven versus Windows Eight versus do we wait for the all important Windows Ten when that comes out? You know?
You never go with a new.
But, so, you know, so, and you know, Windows Eight has all its bugs, so we're, we're discussing that internally, so, you know, we have a significant number of workstations. We bought about twenty workstations this year. That didn't even basically touch the number of workstations that are still on XP or older operating systems.
What are those new ones on? Seven?
Seven, we went with seven on the new ones. So, you know, at almost a thousand dollars for a machine, that's twelve machines for that, twelve thousand dollars for, for the copiers. So there are other capital needs that are going to be looked at and, as, as we go through and if we come back and, you know, we're not going to spend it just to spend it, there's going to have to be a need for it and, and we're going to look at those items with it, but there are a rotating capital basis. It might not be a new copier, but it might be additional twelve machines, twelve PCs for, for people throughout town. And we're also looking at, you know, we, we went through and Chuck, the IT coordinator, went through and looked at, do you really need a, a powerful machine versus, you know, a, a smaller one with a smaller processor? That will get the job done, because all you're running is two applications versus somebody in finance that might be in four or five or, or six different applications during, during one, at one time between everything. So we're also looking at that to, to try to save costs when it comes to the, to, to the computer and the boxes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I did want to maybe clarify one thing, I, I wasn't looking at like, if I was coming up trying to cut two hundred thousand to get, we spent eight hundred, last, eight hundred thousand last year on paving, I wasn't trying to this year get down to six. What I was again, was he's, he's adding, on his number, he was adding two hundred grand to get it to a million. That's the part I probably vote against on, I would, I'd rather, I don't have a problem spending another eight, that, that's fine.
Ultimately, we brought it up to near a million this year, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we were just, we were over a million with the excess.
Right, right. And then, so Mike, now I'm more of asking you guys about, what about the garage? His, his very, his statement's very telling. I want to challenge all of us to say, if we can't get community involvement, then maybe another committee shouldn't be formed, but that doesn't mean, I'm all for testing the voters again. I don't, I don't mind asking them three years in a row and then that we have, and then on the third year, we have our answer. Maybe the second year we do it, the answer's yes and we have it and it goes. But if they say no three times, then let's buy some paint, let's get the cruisers out to the other mechanics, let's buy a trailer so they can have a locker room, but at least then, we have a policy decision in the direction where to take. If the community won't support it after being asked three times, then I say, then we have a green light to make different choices, because something has to be done there. All seven of us agree that something needs to be done there. And what better way than to keep pushing, you know, it sounds like the wrong way, but push the envelope year after year, and if it takes three noes from the community, well then, okay, then nothing to apologize, the, the community has spoken, but we as a group should then know what we have to do down there and just take a different approach. So that's my two cents again, but more, I need more feedback from you guys.
Do you want me? Go ahead, yes, Tom.
Yeah, you're, one other thing that he put on there was the status of the contract for the Public Works employees, and it may come down to that choice. Which one do we? If we put them both on there, what risk do we run by putting them both on there?
I don't know.
Neither do I.
I'm not sure what you mean, Tom, in what way.
When you look at the potential cost for that contract, okay, as opposed to the bond issue for the garage. At the same time, they're going to sit there and they're going to do this. Okay? They, they could sit there and do this, all right? And so, you know, at some point, if we get to an agreement with them, we're going to have to sit there and look at those dollars and compare that against and, and say, what do we want? Which is more important?
Could I recommend that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Could we put it on for the second meeting in, in November? Because I think that's when we'll be bringing the CIP forward, and I think it will be a proper conversation to have when we bring the CIP forward.
And we'll have to make a decision by that night?
I would object to that.
Okay. Because you'd like to discuss it now?
I'd like to be a part of that discussion.
Oh, you're not going to be here?
I'm not going to be here.
And that's going to be the first or second you're not going to be?
The second, be November twentieth. We can put it on for the fifth?
Can I, can I get your feedback now? As far as just the, the topic of the Highway Garage, what's, what's your, what's your thoughts?
I'd rather not put it on the ballot. The fact that one person signed up is extremely telling. And I, I, I'm, Councilman Mayon's concerns is where I'm thinking right now, especially where, where we're still negotiating with the laborers there. I think for the community, they've already said no once, and now we put, we put forth another bond issue and potentially maybe another contract.
I would just, I'm, I'm not challenging you just to challenge you, because you know I have a lot of fun doing that.
What's the cross you've got to bear, Council?
I, I don't know if, if it really tells us anything that only one person stepped forward. I don't know if there's any real information there at all. You know, economic development committees down to three members.
But that's, but that's the point, that's the point. We're struggling to get people to participate in this community on, on where we want to take our community. We're talking about direction, we're talking about future, and the fact that we can't get anybody to participate in just the basic review, not even talking about the EDCA, just the basic review of the Highway Department, which we all agree is in desperate need of an overhaul, and we can't get two thirds of the community to agree with that is, is just mind-boggling.
We can't get people to join other committees, whether park and rec, conservation, zoning board, I mean, it's, it's our, it's our, it's our society, we have a great town, but we, I think sometimes we get way too close into not realizing who we are. We are the political geeks. We, not everybody is like us.
It's true.
It's true. We, we are really out there and we are. People who do what we do, all the people, no disrespect for all the people in the community who are on these committees, but they are a small group of people and we don't really represent the three thousand or four thousand voters who show up, they're too busy. That, they, and the ones that show up to vote, they put our trust in our decision-making, that's why maybe we get re-elected or so, but those four thousand people, they don't care about the budget, the garage committee. They don't want to join that committee, they don't want to join EDCA. And that's okay, I'm saying, so don't judge them for not joining. I don't think it reflects that they don't want the garage or they want the garage, I, that.
It indicates a sentiment as to how people might.
I disagree.
That's fine, that's fine.
Counselor Woods?
Yeah, I was, I'm not going to get in the middle of you two. I was very encouraged, I was very encouraged by the suggestion that we begin a capital reserve for the garage. I think that accomplishes what Counselor Dwyer and Counselor Boy are talking about. I think it keeps the discussion in front of the people. Obviously, I don't know where the council will go with that. Personally, I'd like to see more than the five hundred thousand. If the, if the wisdom is, Mr. Kinnick, I see your reaction, if the wisdom is it's going to cost us four, two, we're going to wait eight or nine years if we add the five hundred. And maybe I'll take some of Dan's paving money and put it in the, but I don't want to do horse trading early. But I, I think, I think that the, like I say, this council is encouraged, because it keeps, it keeps the issue in front of the people. It allows the people to judge whether or not we have, we make any sense with each other and them. So, two cents for five hundred thousand, let's go for it.
And I'll just, I'll.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say, we're still, it's, we're still looking at three point two million dollars. That is, that is what the Highway Garage that we're looking at. It's not any other number but three point two million dollars right now, this year, if we put it on the ballot for next year, it'll be around the three point two million dollar number. Sorry, thank you.
Counselor Boy.
I was going to double down on Lon's comment. When, when Dan and I started going, that's where I was going to, I support the capital reserve fund. I think it makes sense, because it keeps the issue as a prior, as a, as a, as a policy priority in our budget, we're saying, we're allocating X number of dollars in the capital reserve fund for the Highway Garage, because it needs to be done. And I think if the voters see that and they know that we're committed to it, then gradually, hopefully, they might see the light and say, why aren't we getting this done? And then I think that introduces the conversation again.
It reminds me the, it reminds me the library, though. You saved for several years and they had, you know, two, two point six million for the library and they asked the voters, the voters said no. So you could save for three years and have three million and then, and then it all, what? Goes back, goes, does something else? I like to have more of their, the yes before we save for it.
But I don't, I don't think you can compare the library to the, to the Highway Garage.
Maybe not, I.
We got a majority vote, we didn't get the super majority. The library never got a majority vote. The five times, the five times, it was on the ballot five times, I think, at least four.
Yeah.
Okay? And it never exceeded a majority, never.
Good point.
As, as I've expressed previously, just put my two cents where, is that I wasn't in favor of doing it right away anyway. I still feel that way, but I also feel a little more encouraged, because I can foresee going with the five hundred thousand and six hundred, whatever it is, two years down the road where the bonds are completely gone, which is two thousand eighteen?
First bond's two thousand eighteen, the next bond's twenty.
Right, which we would probably have close to two million then, and then the bond, and then what?
Five hundred thousand times two years is not two million.
Well, we'll magnify it, we'll get good interest. Oh, okay. Okay, let's say it's a million.
We're getting a junk bond market like California did.
So let's say it's a million, okay, if it's, but really, two thousand eighteen is not two years away anyway. But if we, but let's say, let's say our goal is like two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we will have accumulated a certain amount and the bond would be that much less. I mean, that's a wonderful combination, and you're absolutely right, we're keeping it alive. We're, the people voting in the budget are basically validating, yes, we agree with that, CIP, we want it down the road. To me, it's sort of a happy medium, but, but I do want to stay in your point.
But, but five hundred isn't just two cents on the tax rate. If you're going to save five hundred a year, that's.
Seventeen cents.
Seventeen, I mean, and not counting insurance rate or anything else, that, you know, so we could be looking at a twenty cent or twenty-five cent. Probably the way it, it was presented tonight and we put away five hundred, probably looking more like twenty, over twenty cents.
What would the bond be on the tax rate?
Significantly less in the first year and then.
First year, yeah.
And I think it was around the, I, I can't recall off the top of my head, but it was, it was in, it was in, it was in the ten to.
Twelve-ish.
Twelve-ish cents, I believe, I think the highest one was like eleven cents.
Sure. I think the best news to report from this discussion is that we don't have a dozen items to talk about or a dozen problems. We, we've, we've, we've got things that are all in one, you could carry with one hand. That's a good position to be in, so I, I feel positive about the upcoming budget season because of that, so.
And, and depending on how the council wants to go with the capital reserve or bond, there are certain ways that you could present the capital reserve fund for something of this sort. So you might fund it for three hundred and then you could do wording that, you know, if there's any excess up to X amount of, at the end of the year, complete putback in, into this capital reserve fund, you know? So you have a baseline and then any excess up to.
So those are the things that I would recommend. We try to pull together for an agenda item, so we have the whole picture. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You want to do it on December fifth, then, when you're all present?
Time is not an issue?
The only time of the issue is if we're going out to bond.
Right.
We need to go out and, and engage our, our contingencies, not our contingencies, our constituents.
Let's do it at the beginning of November. Let's do the beginning of November. No, the first one, because Bill wants to be.
Okay, the Town Manager won't be there for that one.
But she'll have you.
She'll have me.
To present all the information.
That's it, yeah. No, if that's what you want to do, whatever you want to do, we'll make it work.
I mean, it would just be on this, it'll just be this one topic.
November seventh, then?
Pros and cons, options, right?
Seventh is a Friday, it's the sixth.
Sixth.
November's a blur already.
Okay.
Okay.
We killed that enough? Okay, the next is the meeting schedule.
Budget schedule?
Nope, there's a budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Budget schedule, I'm sorry, you're right, I jumped ahead. There is a proposed budget schedule that was distributed, and I did, the reason I sort of jumped ahead too, is the meeting schedule, I had a recommendation for some dates, and they do concur with what's already here. Right? If we do the first and third, Thursday in November, December, rather than the second and fourth, those dates are accurately, accurately reflected here.
There's dates in here, November, December.
No, but when you move into January, no, that's right, I looked into January and went back to the two and four. Thank you, thank you for picking that up.
Basically, last year, we tried something new, we tried to condense the amount of meetings that the town council added in the month of January, we condensed it down to three meetings, correct?
During the budget schedule. And what was happening at that is that we, we're just coming forward and say, asked the council, did they like that when we condensed the, the schedule to those three meetings? It also gives us more flexibility if we do have a couple of snow days in there. We will start, if we do this, we will start January twelfth instead of a week prior. It'll give a little more time for, for review and it's, it's basically January twelfth, fifteenth, and nineteenth would be the meeting schedule for the council. The council has a regular meeting on January eighth would be the first meeting in January, the twelfth would be the, the following Monday, the fifteenth would be the following Thursday, and then the nineteenth, which is Civil Rights Day, would be the, on Monday. So they would be three in a row, boom, 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 instead of starting regular council meeting, go back into budget mode, go back into budget mode, regular council meeting. So the three meetings would be right in a row during, during the budget season. And if the, if.
Any comments about the schedule? Does everyone agree that? Looks reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess it's, it's a go. Now, the town council meeting. I know in the past, I know, Tom, you had mentioned this too, that normally we have our meetings the 2nd and 4th Thursday, right?
Correct.
And usually in the past, in November and December, we've done the 1st and 3rd.
Thursdays.
Thursdays, which would come out to, if I'm accurate, November 6th and November 20th.
Correct.
And December 4th and December 18th.
Yes, I believe those are right.
Otherwise, we'd be meeting on Christmas Day.
Well, you can be here.
Well, I didn't say.
You won't get quorum. And then in January, it does return back to the 2nd and 4th, which is January 15th to 29th, which is accurately reflected on the budget.
Right.
8th and, 8th and 22nd is what you just approved.
8th and 22nd.
Okay.
8th and 22nd.
Then I have the wrong dates, sir.
The 8th and 22nd would be your January meeting schedule.
8th is the 2nd Thursday.
Which is the 2nd, it's back to the 2nd and 4th.
Right. I didn't put the right dates.
You just had the wrong dates, yeah.
Yeah. 26, right. So, how do people feel about the proposed November and December dates? Everyone's happy with that?
I would just, since I'm away on November 20th, that, any items of consequence, I really would not like to, I hate to sound selfish, but I just.
You are.
You are.
Yeah.
Guys didn't stop when I left.
If you're not gonna be here, that's your choice.
I'm not gonna be here either. Is there gonna be an issue with a quorum in that night?
It'll be down to 5.
Right, but there's, everyone else a plan on?
Life will go on.
Well, just wanted to double check. Okay.
And depending on the agenda, there might be, you know, depending on what's coming forward.
You can always go by phone, too. I mean.
Yeah, right. You could dial in. Me calling in from a pub in Dublin, are you kidding? Actually, that's possible. That's possible.
That's six hours off, though.
I'd be six hours ahead. It'd be 3:00 in the morning.
Right.
There you go. Let's Skype.
I could do that. That actually seems true.
We'll put you up on the screen.
Actually, I might even do that. I might do that for giggles.
No, you don't want to do that. That's too much to contemplate.
Okay, I would like to.
Yeah, it's 3:00 in the morning in Dublin.
Well, November 20th is my wedding anniversary, so.
Oh, you enjoy your wedding anniversary.
That's right, enjoy it.
Okay, I'd like to request a recess at this time.
Hold on. Well, before we go any further.
Before we go any further.
Want to add something on this topic, okay? I think since we're doing this almost every year and chewing up meeting time, I'm gonna suggest that when we redo, or that we redo our policies and procedures and make that part of it, that we move November and December to the 1st and the 3rd. Okay, as a matter of, as a matter of.
General course.
General course, okay? That way, we don't, every year, we don't have to come in here and throw rocks at each other about where we're gonna be and.
And make us jealous about.
Yeah, right. And then that's, that sort of thing. So, you know, it's just, it just makes more sense to, I think it makes more sense to do it that way. You may disagree or you may not agree, but you might want to do that. And we could, if we wanted to, we could do it now or we could wait, not necessarily tonight, but with the proper notice to do it at another meeting.
On a due list.
And then, you know, or you could wait until after the election when we normally do the revision of the, of the policies and procedures or take a look at them with an eye to see if anybody wants to change anything.
So, you got a, you do a list, right?
Got it right here. Just to piggyback on that.
Before?
If we could have an official vote because you are changing your policy and procedures on the meeting dates.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Woods. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstaining? 7-0-0. Because it's the official policy. Okay, now I'd like to propose a recess, please.
Move to recess.
Second. Move to recess and go into non-public session.
Non-public.
And return to the assessed, non-public session.
At 8:50. Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? 7-0-0. Okay. Reconvene at 9:23. Okay, we're, we have an emergency addition to the new business. This has to do with repurchasing of a deeded, tax-deeded property. We've had a non-public session. And normally, when we post that the purpose is, as my attorney has explained to us, that the purpose of it is to be able to notify people who are involved in it. And the people who are involved in this situation were, in fact, at the non-public. So, our attorney feels we've met the legal obligation. So, based upon that, I believe, is there any discussion that needs to be done at this point? We ready for voting?
Madam Chairman, I move that we repurchase the recently tax-deeded property, tax map parcel 6A-2/161 for the repurchase price of all back taxes, interests, and costs pursuant to RSA 80 colon 8, 80, Roman numeral 3, and Article 66-1 of the Meramec Town Code.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counsel.
You said I moved to repurchase.
Right. To allow the, I'm sorry, to allow the repurchase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion made by Counselor Mahan, seconded by Counselor Boyd. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstaining? Okay, so it's six yes, one no. That would be Counselor Rothhouse, and no abstentions.
This is all yours.
Okay.
And Counselor Harrington, just for the record, did you say when we came back from recess?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
9:20.
Amazingly. Okay, minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, September 25th, 2014 town council meeting minutes as presented.
Motion made by Counselor Boyd.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woods. Absolutely.
On page 5 of 7, line 46.
Lon. Lon?
I'm sorry. On page 5 of 7 of the minutes for October 23.
September 23.
September 23. Line 46, the word raising, I believe, is R-A-Z-I-N-G.
Good catch.
Just what we needed, another word, Smith.
Well, we just have two different meetings.
It wouldn't catch, that, that spell check wouldn't catch context.
No, it wouldn't. Any other changes?
Page 7, line 10, Rashashana, Rashashana should have an H on the end.
What line again? I'm sorry.
Line 10, page 7.
Okay.
It doesn't come, it's surprising.
It doesn't come past Boyd. It's just the way he is.
Excellent. Any other revisions? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negatives? Any abstentions? 7-0-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night, Meramec.
I won't, I won't raise the question.
I want a, oh, no.
No?
No.
There are no comments.
Move to adjourn?
Sorry about that. No.
Second.
Oh. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's not even that late either, is it?
We're used to getting out of here early.
I know. I know. We can spoil. Any against? Oh, you're against. Okay. Adjournment? Oh. I would like to request that we allow Mr. Boyd to have his say.
You're in charge.
Mr. Boyd, go for it. It was my, it was my error. You shouldn't have to pay for my error.
I just wanted to wish the lady tomahawks best of luck against Timber Lane this Saturday in the field hockey tournament. Good luck, girls. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else want to make a comment for the final vote? Okay, all those in favor of getting out of here?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
7-0-0. Now can I say it? Good night, Meramec.
Yes.